Okay, all right, we're back in session, it's one thirty. Today is the twenty first of July. So, on one thirty is Sheriff Paige Daplin. On page thirty seven, thirty eight. She was visiting with David before. He's only got a couple of changes. And what we've done, David, we're going more by twenty nineteen more than twenty twenty. So, out of state.
Right, right.
We're just, rather than go through the line item like you were doing, we've just been going through the changes, you know?
Okay.
And so, we changed uniforms, we went from sixteen thousand to fourteen thousand.
Yes, sir.
And you said it's basically been sort of caught up?
We're caught up, and we're getting a supply.
And then on subscriptions, he went from a thousand.
David, and I think that was just a misprint, I didn't go up on that, so it's just a thousand, yes, sir.
Okay.
On subscriptions.
Forty three ninety.
It's in the middle section.
So, you want to leave it?
Yes, sir, a thousand. I think it was just my bad handwriting, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, and like I say, unless you have something, everything else has stayed the same. Now, I did notice on behind page thirty eight on our edition, that you have requested a or another
Yes, sir.
And gave an increase in call volume and gave a number of calls for service.
Yes, sir. The call volume, the fact, the way that things are in society right now, things are getting worse, it's officer safety to have another. I can utilize the spare pickup that we've always had for that deputy to use. It's just getting a, more for safety reasons than getting another officer out there. Yes.
And you were able to absorb Virginia?
Yes, yes, took her back into the jail.
And, and what I'm talking about is on juvenile probations, they've had to reduce, you know, some of their funding has gotten reduced from the state. And so, and with all this craziness going on, they don't have the volume for the students that they've had before.
I think he lost Florida, and this is just from talking to him, he lost Florida in some more surrounding communities, he wasn't going to be able to pay her. Because our deal was, he paid her nine months and I paid her three months. And we were able to absorb her back into the jail at about the same cost as what she was getting.
And then the other thing I was gonna, we were gonna talk to you about David is on our page eight.
Mm-hmm.
And we were talking about, of course, housing and prison.
Yes, sir.
And of course, you know, like I said, this year is so, so unnormal, you know, so, let's see, where's that at? It's on, it's on page one, it's thirty four twenty three. And we had projected two hundred and twenty five thousand. In nineteen, we held for two hundred and twenty six thousand. And that's what I was telling them, I know that lots of the surrounding area jails are at capacity.
Mm-hmm.
And I felt like if we weren't in the middle of this pandemic, we'd probably house in prison and make this money.
We're housing, I believe, seven inmates right now for DeSmyth County. I've got two from Motley County. Right off the top of my head, I can't tell you how many I'm holding for Floyd County, probably around seven or eight. So, we are still housing for other people. It's just the governor's office has not wanted a lot of intermingling between jails, moving people around and everything.
Yeah.
But for Floyd County and Motley County, we're their jail, so.
So, do you would figure if, and, and we're operating sort of under the spectrum of twenty twenty one is going to be more normal than
Yes.
this year? So, if you did that, do you think that two twenty five would be a reasonable figure?
Yes, sir. Because Floyd County's constantly calling me at night. I've turned down a lot of inmates, just for the simple reason their misdemeanors. And we have turned down some from DeSmyth County also. The ones that we have right now are, they're paper-ready inmates that have been there over a year and a half, and we were pretty secure in knowing they didn't have the COVID and all that. So, we could house more, we're just trying to keep it out of the jail right now.
Okay, ten percent more, and that's a good deal. We just wanted, like I say, I was looking at the history and then like I said, I knew, talking to you and some of the other on the list, our county judges, you know, I know some of the jails are, are full.
Yep.
This COVID has sort of saved some of them, but then it hurts some of them because they're not unable to transfer any, anywhere.
In and out, right, we could house some more, it's just not knowing the status of their COVID and everything from another jail.
Okay.
I know, like Lubbock County is full, the last I heard that they were in proposals to add on to their jail in the next year or two, so.
Which always bodes well for
For us. Right.
Okay, that's all I have, does anybody else have any questions, Sheriff?
So, you think that you need to, your domestic disturbance calls didn't went up, is that kind of what you's indicating, David, because of the?
Well, all calls, especially, and I can't say it's going to continue, but everybody's been quarantined together and our domestics have gone up quite a bit.
I see why, people get tired of being hemmed up.
They're getting tired of it, just our call volume in general has gone up all over the county. We're seeing a rise in burglaries and stuff to Lubbock, Hell County line. Those people are beginning to come up here more and hit Cotton Center and down in that area.
All right, do you have any questions, the rest then?
No, sir.
All righty, then, I don't have anything else, then, you're good.
Hey, David, what about the secured metal detectors?
Oh, Carla was telling me that the metal detector in the Justice Center
Yes.
has gone out and that was their last one. So, I'm telling you that, I don't want to get on those agenda for this year, but you can see about buying a replacement one.
Okay, we'll probably need to get more than one.
Well, I started saying
I've looked around, there is a, and I can't get them to call me back, there is a place in El Paso, Texas, that will come in and work on those. But I can't get them to call me back to give me a price estimate or anything.
Okay. Well, I was telling them, I was looking earlier when I had some money for us to spend, you know, for Ranger and stuff. And I was looking and I seen some of them, they were right around four thousand dollars.
Right.
And so, you know, I don't know, that wasn't the bottom end.
Right.
That wasn't the top end, but it's sort of in the middle. And so, I didn't know if that was a good price or if you can find one like
What I've been finding out is somewhere between thirty-five to fifty-five, six thousand, somewhere in there, depending on what you wanted it to do and everything.
And we've talked about, since COVID, we've sort of redirected here, everybody down to the basement. And that's what I was telling them, if we can get someone to come and look at the first floor on those doors.
Okay.
And come some way to make them accessible, open from inside and still lock from the outside. And we'd really like to sort of keep the security down there.
Okay.
And we'd also talk about maybe getting them something a little more permanent than just, you know, a desk out in the hallway.
Okay.
But also maybe getting a metal detector for this building.
Okay.
And so, but like I said, we do have some funding in the security fund, maybe for one here in the next, but I know y'all need one over at the Justice Center as soon as the courts are allowed to start back up and have, have
And that's another thing we're looking at that I'll mention, once this is over, the jail is going to get flooded with inmates as far as our local inmates that we've been putting off and when court starts back and all the warrants and stuff that hadn't been being served because their misdemeanors are not coming to jail right now. So, with that projected revenue, it may be the middle of next year before we really start seeing that because we'll have to take care of our inmates and our warrants and stuff first and go from there.
And that's what I told them when we were talking about, you know, like civil figures down because they're for a while, they suspended it.
Right.
Civil actions.
Right.
And then, but they didn't suspend them forever, I mean, they didn't, they didn't discount them, they just said you couldn't file between a certain period and a certain period. But once that's lifted, we're going to file.
Yeah, it's going to get flooded, the courts and the jail.
All right, anybody got anything else? Thank you, David.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for what you've done, you did a good job. Hey, David, would you take your, your heel and throw away?
Yep.
Try and ask her.
Yep.
Nobody else is going for that, are they?
See ya.
See y'all.
I'm going to start calling him hate. He's, yeah, what?
Uncle?
Can you iron too? I heard a tip or how her son was preparing, you know, we called her hate, which you didn't have any idea yet. She got online and gave her a hate and she was mad. Do you want to know if you can iron too?
Yeah, I do.
I know he likes to cook.
Yeah, he did cook.
I iron too, my mother's in my house, she doesn't need that. You don't learn how to cook, wash and iron? You type, she doesn't get some of the iron and stuff. She doesn't get some of the iron and stuff.
What? Kid is so
I mean, I guess, was that what you asked about at first?
Yeah.
I thought David was better.
Yeah, very good, thank you. He got Carla at two thirty and after at three fifteen.
We gave Carla an opportunity yesterday, she just passed the door.
Don't need to do it, I'm good. I want you to do it in fifteen, Carla. I want you to can do it in fifteen minutes. Carla, I'm not, I'm about to change.
Yeah, well, I think you ever happen at fifteen, but we'll try if you want to.
I'd like to tell me my pass number.
Yeah, I got it all here. We start on fourteen.
Okay, that's, I got that one. Um, the only thing, I'm going to see it, the only thing I changed on my postage.
Oh, wait, just a second.
Okay. It's sticky.
I was already with Benny.
You raised your post?
I raised my postage because I usually carry over postage and this year I didn't, so, um, that's down. And then the other thing, uh, let's see.
You raised machine maintenance a thousand.
And I think I just did my figures, that's why I raised it, I, because of that four, six sixty-two.
Okay.
I, I don't really know why that got raised, but then the other thing is the advertisement, and I just put it at three hundred. It doesn't need to be at a thousand. And then the office equipment, I just raised it to two thousand. Okay, next page.
Uh, wait, wait a minute, what did you change to a thousand?
She did.
Uh, the thousand to the three hundred.
The advertisement.
And she, she dropped it from a thousand back to three hundred.
Okay, so
And then, everything else is the same.
Posture.
Yeah, and the office, the office, the equipment, it's two thousand, fifteen, whatever it was.
Page twenty-four.
Oh, did you want to change that back to fifteen or leave it at two?
No, leave it at two. Twenty-four?
Twenty-two.
I'm still have to write these down.
I'll lift you a little, I mean. Which one, Ben?
That's twenty-four, you can do it fine.
Okay, and I raised that because our contract says that it goes up five percent. And so, that's where that's at. And then the, um, my file left it at ten. And the county website, I had fifteen and I changed it to ten because we updated it this year.
That computer lease maintenance, is that
Uh-huh, it's N code, tile, it's Odyssey N code, um, jury.
Fixing B Navigator.
Yeah, Fixing B Navigator.
Now, is that all, how, how is it? All right, then page, fifty-three.
Can I, can I pause? I'm sorry. No, it's the nursing home, they'll call me back. Where am I going next?
Well, if they call you back, then just
Well, it's, I just, uh, FaceTime with my mom. She wouldn't even know it was me, but I would like to do it.
Uh, fifty-three is the jury revenue.
Okay, that's the revenue, that's what the state pays back to us and
You said they're going to increase five hundred on jury.
Yeah, because I feel like next year, we're going to be doing makeup on these juries that we're missing.
Okay.
Where we have, you know, maybe two, three a month, next year, I think it's going to be every week until we get it caught up.
And then transferring from the general increase from twenty-one eight to twenty-seven three two.
Now, that, that is an amount that I calculate based on what she's budgeting.
Okay, I was going to say, I don't remember doing that.
No, it's the difference that, that I have to calculate that the general fund's going to fit in.
Okay.
That's the numbers line.
Yeah, I was like, I don't remember filling that out, I'm sorry.
Next page is our jury expenditure. And we got the office supplies, well, the
Yeah, and then the next two stayed the same, the meals. And then I jumped from fifteen to eighteen. And then eight to ten on grand jury. And, you know, the petty juries, we may want to go more, more than eighteen. We might want to go, you know, twenty to twenty-five for the reason of, of, uh, so many juries are going to be held.
Why don't we, why don't we turn down a little?
Now, which one says
It's the district court juries, petty jurors.
And you want to do the what?
Twenty-two five, let's do twenty-two five.
Okay, twenty-two five.
How these columns are going to be kept at columns, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
So, hopefully, and if we, that's one we did have at eighteen?
Yes.
It has been fifteen, so I just raised it seven, seventy-five hundred.
And then we have the grand jury, which is pretty set, uh, but same reason because we're, the, our number is small here for the reason of we skipped two months of grand jury. And so, put it back to ten.
Okay.
I think I left the other numbers the same.
Jury donation going to be
Yeah, I'm hoping, since we're going to have more juries, they'll donate more. They don't want their seven dollars.
Okay, page sixty-nine, seventy.
Okay, sixty-nine, I didn't change anything, did I? The revenue off of, yeah, I didn't change that.
Yeah, okay.
That's just a fee, uh, our copy.
All right, and then, seventy, you left it the same.
I left it the same.
Page eighty-one and eighty-two.
Okay, eighty-one, um, because I think, I, I raised it five hundred for the reason of, I think, because we're going to start taking care of more cases. And then the three hundred interest.
The next page.
I'm leaving that in there, it's to have that part-time person that works on our books.
Okay.
Um, she didn't work, of course, because of COVID and it's usually during the summer, so we didn't do that.
Okay. And then eighty-five and eighty-six is the head office. You went down a thousand and then you had some of the fees.
Yeah, because I, I pretty well took care of all my office and, um, the judges, I, lots of times I'll buy compute, a laptop or a computer for them out of that, and we're all, we're all pretty good on that right now.
Okay, and then the next page is the expenditure.
Oh, that was the income?
Yeah, that was the revenue.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And then this time
I lowered it because
You lowered this because like I said, y'all
Yeah. Yeah.
And then the last two pages are eighty-nine and ninety.
You know, we don't collect that fee anymore, so anything that we collect off of that is from an old, is from old cases. So, that's why it's just at a hundred dollars. You know, we put it higher last year because of the fact that was when we first stopped it. And now, all these cases that are paying now, it's not there, so.
And then the next page, expenditure.
And if y'all remember, that is for the law library books, not the law library, but for the books, for the judges. And it's not a books, it's a computer program. And Judge Sapolli got it where all of them got it for a really good
No, I didn't get it.
You didn't? Caller, I bet she has the license.
I haven't needed it because we
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Looks like it.
Woo, woo. All right.
He's on page forty-seven.
Oh, yeah, I'll take it with me.
Well, it looks trashy in there.
Now, we got them all catching water leaks.
Yeah. Eddie's here?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, have you been not done?
I bet you read the chairs so much. Yes, sir, sign in. Please, thank you. Want to get the sign in, if that's a hot seat, you can eat yourself a ham or
Didn't anybody cry?
Huh?
Didn't anybody cry?
Adam, okay?
Yes, sir.
Is this a hot seat?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I tell them.
And he's playing.
All right, this here is page forty-seven. Benny, we're doing this a little different this year.
Okay.
Whether it's just going down the line items, we, we're checking. And it looks like most of your items stayed the same. The building and ground maintenance went from twenty-three oh fifty to twenty-four thousand.
Well, his original was twenty-four, you gotta be able to manage it to twenty-three.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's right, right.
And then, uh, everything else looks the same. Now, I do know if you'll turn the page. The invitation for a replacement pickup, again, for a twenty twenty Chevy, fifteen hundred Silverado. This current pickup has a hundred and sixty-one thousand miles. All right, does anybody have any questions, Eddie?
When you said your, your pickup, you said security, what do you mean by that? It's hard to show it, they did that a hundred and sixty-one thousand miles.
It's time to show it.
Yeah. What, what do you mean by that?
Like in the mornings when I started, it misses real bad, then it levels out. And then, when you started, sometimes, you started, it, it knocks. I don't know, transmission's going out or if I keep it, it's fine, but it's going to need some, some work to
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Judge, wasn't there something back on the revenue side we were going to ask?
Yeah, we were going to talk to him about
The rentals.
Yeah. Our first combat is a little fuzzy, we were wondering maybe the year was a little more clear.
First page is it on good?
One, did you take one or did it?
I don't see it on one.
It's in thirty-seven oh one.
It's on page two. And in eighteen, Benny, we, we collected twenty-two, almost twenty-three thousand in rental fees. In nineteen, we were at fourteen. Of course, this year, we're down to like twenty-three hundred.
Yeah.
We haven't been able to hold many of them, so. But under a normal year, a non-COVID year, do you think twenty thousand is a reason?
And rentals?
Yes. It's changing to twenty. And then I know the parking bill is sort of the same thing, you don't have events there, you cut down on some of your parking. And then when you don't have those people that are traveling into town and picking spots, you also lose that. So, do you think under a normal year, about ten thousand is, is reasonable?
Four things.
Those fees, okay, the parking. All right, that's, anyone else? Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to, um, just let y'all know that the Freightliner, the excavator that was purchased with the bond loan for the renovations at the Ollie Ladder Center, um, that machine, um, the repairs or anything done to that when we get the That machine, the repairs or anything done to that when we get the maintenance or whatever, that comes out of this budget. So this year, there were repairs to that, that piece of equipment that were on.
Actually, I think y'all bought it when you redid the parking lot out there.
Parking lot.
That's when it was purchased. But what I'm saying.
Well, we bought it for the tire.
Well, I think this was like a deal to do the parking lot out there.
This is what we bought to spray the oil when we did the chips and stuff.
Whatever it's called, I don't know what the thing is called. I think that's what they called it in the equipment.
That distributor technically.
Or distributor or whatever it is.
Yeah, well, I'm good with now, but that's true.
No, because it was purchased with bond money. It was purchased with the bond money for the Ollie Liner Center.
The excavator, that big thing you bought for the tires, the tires, that's a beauty.
But I'm talking about the thing, somebody's used it lately.
It's your barn. Yes, well, we had to buy some batteries and do some other repairs to get an inspection on it and all that.
So that's what, you know, when you look at that equipment maintenance and repairs. That's why that's up, that's what I'm telling you.
It's forty-seven, it's in Benny's budget. And it's under equipment maintenance and repair. So far this year, we spent fifty-three eighty-five.
It's gonna be under that until.
Fifty-three eighty-five, we spent that much on? Well, maybe not that, but everything else.
Not just that, but if you look at his budgeted amount, fifteen hundred dollars. He's also had to have repairs to the cooler out there.
Walking cooler.
The walking cooler, and that's in a lot. There've been several repairs done to that.
But he's got the coolers, he's got the ister, or the foreclip.
Tractor.
He's got the lawnmower. So, I mean, he's got a bunch of equipment that fifteen hundred ain't near enough money.
And I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention because.
I didn't realize that that money had to come out of his budget for repairs.
It has to right now, until I get clarification and until we're through paying that bond back. Because, because that's what it was purchased with and that's the reasoning for it.
What if we put that at seventy-five hundred?
Well, that would be a whole lot closer, I think. You think that'd be enough?
Let's put the seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, but when you work on that chip spreader, that chip spreader is not cheap.
No, and I mean, I mean like that walking cooler, there've been several repairs that have had to be done to that. And I mean, one of those repairs was twenty-two hundred dollars. So that, that blew it out at the very beginning.
Well, changing the subject for you to ask a what excavator? The excavator that we have out at the tire dealership? Where did that thing fall under?
Yeah.
It depends on when it, where it was purchased, I mean, I can't tell you off the top of my head, I'll have to look, but.
You probably do need to look.
We have hundreds of pieces of equipment. I mean, did you purchase it?
It comes out of all four precincts.
Because if it was purchased with all four precincts participating, then the repairs come out of all four precincts.
If anything, like you bought the average part of the day? Well, we divided.
But the girls know where the stuff was paid for from, we have a list.
It was divided.
And they have to look it up, so, I mean, we're very specific in where it's paid for and who, who can treat it.
Well, so you think the seventy-five hundred is enough for this?
I think so, I mean, lots of repairs, money's been spent on the cooler. And I don't know if that's gonna go down or not.
That's why I'm asking, do you think it's enough?
Because those coolers, they tend to, once you start spending money on them, they're sort of like vehicles, when you start spending money on them, then you have to keep spending money on them, so.
We may need to put a little more in here.
And that doesn't include, you know, like the judge said, all the other equipment, plus his tires, battery, whatever.
You'll put ten? Well, I think in ten before it comes to mind, but I mean, I'm good with seventy-five, but what y'all think?
I would say ten.
Because of what he just said, those coolers and things are probably gonna give trouble and he's got quite a bit of equipment he's up on his budget. I think ten.
And I would think if that cooler keeps giving you as much problems as it has, you might check on what needs to be replaced and, you know. Buying a new rather than just having it repaired.
How old are those?
They're old, I think they have to be thirty-four years old.
See, right now it's working. But it'll run three months and it'll mess up on again. It's not cheap, I think.
They wouldn't have been, they would have been, I guess, put in when they renovated the the Ollie Liner Center. When that occurred. I've been here thirty-four years and it was like that when I was first here. All right, any other questions, Benny?
Put it, put that ten right?
Yes, sir. All right, well, thank you, Benny.
Well, let me, I've got two things I want to share with y'all.
Okay.
We gotta, we gotta either clean that dirt that I use for the, for the stock show, or I have to get new dirt, one of the two. They came from Mansfield, weren't they, from Mansfield, Texas?
That's what I say, I got the number and everything, I just didn't know when I hit it.
Another thing we gotta consider is inmate labor. I won't get inmates for a while.
Yeah, we talked about that, we went through that budget for the, for the inmate, you know, and that's, you know, just like the rest of the year, that's sort of a unknown deal, we don't know when.
Yeah, we don't know when.
Or how, but, you know, the other thing is, until we sort of get past all this, we probably won't be having any events there either.
I'm gonna, I've gotta go pick up that van to have it sticker serviced. I wanna park it in the other liner, I'm gonna take it back.
And we still have that line item and everything for the maintenance and everything, so. Whatever you need to do to, you know, get it done, and then, like I say, if you want to park it out there, that'd probably be better.
Yeah, it'd be inside, Benny.
All right.
That was it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All righty.
All right, have a good day.
Oh, Benny, Benny, will you take your.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Until you touch the toilet.
I called, sent a text to the sergeant and asked him to take some of the.
No, Deborah, Lambrecht.
Yeah, I was delighted, the sergeant.
Then when you get to take it, it's a donation.
At three forty-five.
Oh, he is?
All right, Stacy on page eighty-seven and eighty-eight. Eighty-seven is the revenue for airport maintenance. Stacy, we're doing this a little different this year, rather than just going down each deal, we're just looking to change.
Okay.
And I noticed on the major projects, commercial, you raised from three thousand to thirty-five hundred.
Yes, sir, we have another business out there that will be paying a commercial permit fee.
On the tower rental?
I estimated that increase based off of the CPI increase.
That's five months, is it? That's six months.
The seventeenth? Yeah, I guess it's six months. The rest of those all stayed the same. All right, then on page eighty-eight, that was big shift. Contract labor stayed the same. External audits, I'm assuming the auditing service is down it, or will?
Yeah, I didn't, it was twenty-five hundred this year and we budgeted two thousand, so Melinda and I visited and I, I think three thousand should cover it for next year. It seems like it goes up every year.
Is that the same one for the?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's constantly every year, five thousand.
It's what it feels like.
How's it seem, Corin, baby? You went at five hundred? Just because that's the nature of that deal too, I hope it doesn't go up.
Yes.
And then on your general liability, went from twenty-two to twenty-five. Forty-four eighty-two. And the other is all the same. Any questions, Stacy? You have any questions, Stacy?
I do not.
Everything going on at the airport?
Everything's good, traffic's starting to pick up again and. So that's, that's good for, April and May, our fuel cells were down about eighty percent. Eighty percent, and we just were all sitting out there looking at each other. But in June, it started picking up and, and we're, we rebounded real well, if, if we can stay, stay that way, so.
Dissected everything and everybody.
It has, yeah, it has.
Of course, you might pick up a little extra too, because it's ready to go into someplace bigger and busy.
You know, they kind of told us when this very first started in March that, you know, to expect your traffic to increase because people weren't gonna be riding the airline or whatever, that they would be probably, you know, flying on a private airplane. So I went and bought all the fuel we could hold, thinking that if that was true and the transport drivers weren't able to, you know, deliver, I didn't want to run out of fuel. And lots of inventory sitting out there, but you know what? I did, I got it when it was, it was cheap and, and there for a while, I thought they were gonna pay people to take jet fuel, so. It did go in the negative one day and I don't even know how that works, but anyway. It's picked up, it's, it's, everything's doing good. All of our equipment, I hate to say that, is working really well and even though there's, I know, there's no rain and so a lot of, it looks kind of brown out there, but everything's going really good.
Well, good deal.
I'm sorry, Judge, I don't think we'll be battling any hay this year.
No, I don't think so, I just don't think that, I think we could get a lot of rain, it's cloudy out there right now, but I think we could get several inches of rain, I just don't think our grass is gonna only get rebound enough to have enough to harvest, so.
Well, we appreciate what you do.
Thank you, thank y'all, appreciate everyone of you.
Okay, I'm gonna take my pretty little.
Is the car getting out there?
Just been in Stacey's field.
Is this his lawyer? What page is he on?
This one's gonna be on page thirty-five.
Starting in the camera, we hear? Thirty-five. Uh, thirty-five, I can't, like I said. How this come about is he sent me an email yesterday, when I got back to the office. I had an email probably in the name to help him discuss. So I leaned forward and made contact and they set up for thirty-four, thirty-five. So hopefully, according to my tag, she's here in the building, so hopefully we'll.
Tom?
Hi, Deborah.
Hey.
Hey, are you at the office?
Yes, sir.
Hey, we're, we're ahead of schedule on budgets, so if you want to go ahead and call over, we'll go ahead and do yours.
Oh, well, I appreciate that, today's my anniversary, so as soon as I get through with that, I'm heading over. You go, girl. Thank you.
All I can do is if Deborah wants to bake you a cup and a pie.
Thank you.
You better, you better take it.
I wish you might have kept down our tongue more likely for us.
No, I told him it was on the third floor of the courthouse.
You did?
I told him it was on the third floor of the courthouse. Are you sure he's not out there? Sorry, Harold.
Call monkey.
You're about to wear him out. Sir? He wasn't here just a minute ago when it looked out, so y'all don't be shooting. We get you the sign, it's there, and then there's the, see, and when you leave, that cat is gonna donate you a little, one, thing, so.
A gown.
Gown, that's it.
We'll find a useful. So we'll find a useful. There you go. All right, this is on page thirty-five. As you can remember, just to go over last year. The lady that they had working had been out for, for quite a while and we had decided, we're looking to make some, some cuts that we cut that position. And so, yesterday I received an email from the sergeant, he wanted to come visit with us about that. And about to actually visit with us about the budget, so without that, then I'll, I'll just turn, turn it over to you, okay?
Yes, sir. First off, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come back. Over this past year, not knowing a little bit more about what some of the stuff that our admins had to do and with the extra requirements that have been placed on us from the state. I just want to come back and see if there's a way of even, working something out, seeing if there's, we can get another employee back. Filling that with the state's spot right now. The likelihood of that, getting approved by legislature, is not that on the list as far as what they're looking at, we're always gonna try, but.
Course, this whole year, not only for the state, but for all of us, have been, uh, very difficult here, you know, and so, we'll certainly consider any requests, uh, but the way the situation is now, we, we haven't had many departments that have come in and asked for, for lots of additional stuff, simply because of the unknown. You know, we've never done, gone through anything like this before either, so, uh, but we've certainly, uh, considered your request.
And even if it could be a two-day-a-week, I mean, sixteen hours, just for, cause of me traveling, and my corporate getting tasked off with other things, like public information requests, and our, uh, records retention on, you know, destroying the forms that need to be destroyed at that certain time, that stuff for me has been put on the back burner with having to travel and, you know, going all sorts of different directions, so... Even if it's not what it was before, I think it was thirty-two hours or something before, even less than that, just, just some help, something where I'm not pulling my troops off the road to help with the admin side.
Okay.
Be something to be grateful, just to be considered.
All right, well, we'll discuss it, and, uh, if we, uh, come up with an option, then I will be in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay? Anybody else have any questions, Sergeant? All right, well, we appreciate you coming up, and like I say, we, uh, this is day one of our, our department committee, we'll do this again tomorrow with the rest of the departments. And then, the way it works, we, we sort of wrap this part of it at Thursday, and then usually we wait until next week, because we can't make lots of final decisions until we receive, uh, uh, some figures from the appraisal district. And most of the time, we have to tell us probably sometime next week, and so then we'll make it again next week after we get those, and that sort of tells us where we're at. And so, like I say, I'll be in touch with you from one way or another.
I just appreciate you guys giving me the time to come up here and sit down for y'all.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Sergeant.
All righty, so take my
Give Melinda some time to run through the numbers, please, Sandy.
All right.
You'll be here?
Thank you. One more time today, girl.
We think you was, we think you was there all the time, you just overlooked me. Have y'all seen that, you know, Diane, I believe, was, he used to work out there with her?
Never paid her, what you call it.
I, I don't know, I mean, I know that was her, but I haven't heard anything about her.
I haven't, I haven't heard from her in a long time.
She lives just a couple of blocks from my house.
Oh, she does?
But I haven't seen her, uh, out or anything, and I see her husband, you know, he's, uh, he works for Freedom, kind of like.
She's a nice lady.
Yes, she was, she was a nice lady. I just know she wasn't. Grab you a gown, Deborah. Buddy, buddy, you're
That's your covering.
Okay. All right.
All right, what am I, am I?
Like forty-four.
Hey, where you take that with you?
Forty-four.
When I leave, take that with me? Good aft, good afternoon, everybody.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Is that off the wall there?
It's called, uh, Indigent Health.
Indigent Health.
No, it's not called that one, but...
It's Indigent Health. It says VA, but I'm not the VA.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to take it off, but it's gonna keep...
It's on my timesheet too, I'll try to take it off too, and I can.
Okay, Deborah, apparently, I mean, well, no, you have, uh, we're doing this a little different.
Okay.
We're not really going line item by line item.
That's fine.
We're gonna compare really from night things to this year, because that one is a bit and you hadn't changed anything.
No, sir, I didn't change a thing.
We're, we're just like that, now, you did add on, on the next page, you did, uh, put in a request for a part-time twenty-nine employee.
But I, I think I forgot to sign it, cause I made myself a copy.
No, actually, I don't want it signed.
I signed it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, now, Deborah, uh, let me go ahead and, Deborah's been talking about this, actually, she was talking to me, got something else, and then she decided that maybe she would stay working for a little while longer.
Uh-huh.
And that's when her and I discussed about maybe asking for a part-time person, so that she would have someone trained, uh, and I think we can all agree that Deborah's done great job in this, and has for...
This is my tenth year.
The years that she's been doing it, so I think it would benefit us to have someone to learn from her, and, and that way, when she does decide that she's going to retire, then we have somebody in place to...
It's been, probably be at least twenty months or so before I am eligible or ready, or whatever. That's a little, a little, not quite two years, but...
So, but actually, though, if you take the six months remaining this year, if you hire a new position, they'll be with you for about a year.
Yeah, or, or over.
Anyway, that's, that's why she asked for that position, is that I suggested on my, you know...
Well, I think it'd be money well spent.
Yeah, she's, like I say, Deborah has plenty of work, uh, and she does a good job, and like I said, this year it's affecting her like all of us, you know, uh, but then it's also increased some of her workload.
Yes.
As far as digging with, uh, uh, some of the dangers that she has to deal with, and so, but, uh, anyway, uh, we will, uh, consider that part-time position.
And I would also, since this is my tenth year, I'd like to ask for a raise if I could.
Okay. We were gonna...
I don't know what kind of step I'm on, or anything that much about the step, but I do know that, uh, two, three years ago, I missed a step, and Marie'd always kinda kept up with, and then when we brought it to Judge's attention, he didn't wanna go back and get it for me.
We'll do some checking on that. Now, on your part-time position?
Uh-huh.
How would we determine a pay group, pay step, uh?
I don't know what that, do you know anything we talked about? Well, I didn't know, I was talking about it the other day, cause I noticed that there wasn't anything on there, and, and what we were looking at was, uh, group eleven, step one, cause that's where a lot of the other admins are, so, um...
So, it'd be eleven-one to start, eleven-two after six months, and then eleven-three after two.
When I started in Indigent Health, I was just part-time. I was thirty hours.
Twelve forty-four is what it would start.
Okay.
If that's what y'all wanna do.
All right, now, what can you say?
See, when I started over there, I started at thirty hours. Of course, Deanna was full-time, and, and then when she retired, I took the whole thing for, I, they had already put me on for forty hours, but, so I've been doing it by myself for seven years. So, and I don't mind doing it by myself, but someday, you know, if I do retire, well, it'd be nice to have somebody to know what goes on over there.
It's a very complex system, and, and so, I think, we, like Kenny said, we'd be money ahead to have someone trained, uh, in the way you've done, uh, and obviously, anybody that's gonna bring some different traits.
Mm-hmm.
At least they have a basis of, of what's going on and what to do to be the most efficient, in fact, in terms of...
True.
All right, anybody else have any questions, Deborah?
I'd like to comment, Judge, that you, you know, she said thirty hours, and, and I'm just gonna say that, that the thirty-hour employee was actually considered full-time, so therefore, we would have to do automated.
Well, I'm just saying, that's why I started out, it's thirty hours, so this is, this, this just says twenty hours. It, I'm just asking for twenty hours.
And it was more than twenty sheets, or a day would yield.
All right.
To be honest with you, I think twenty would be good, especially because of the length of time
Mm-hmm.
that we anticipate that person to have with Deborah. And so, plus, I think it would help if someone wanted to start doing it part-time, then they could really see if there's something they wanna do from now.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions, Deborah? Nope.
I enjoy the job, and, and I enjoy working with everybody, and I don't know where we're at on juvenile moving or not moving.
Yeah, we, uh, course, all that's been thrown behind because of the school and the government and all that, so, we talked about that yesterday, and, uh, that when they do, we certainly
If and when?
Uh, well, I think they're, they're gonna move, but, uh, when they do, then we have a plan, or I have a plan, especially if you call over, uh, the most important...
It can't be quick enough for me.
First of all, okay. All right, again, thank you.
Thank y'all, and I appreciate y'all working me in early today, um, my anniversary, I'm thirty-seven years today, married to the one little man.
You have any questions?
And, uh, we're going to Texas Roadhouse for dinner.
You buying?
No, he is.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not the, I do need to see you after, real quick.
Like today, right now?
Right now, just...
Okay.
She's got steak, like.
I'm still on TV, so we'll...
The best is trying to get her there before by, so I think it's a little special.
What do you wanna do?
Go ahead, we gotta break.
Go ahead.
Well, I thought you were gonna break, and then I just dropped you.
Where do I, where do I put my?
You have to take it out of here, it's going away.
I have to take it out?
All of our ranch cans are pre-occupied.
Don't burn it.
Appreciate y'all very much, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Well, it's two-thirty-two, let's take about a ten-minute break, let them let me come back, and we'll see if we're, if we need to do anything else for today. We're good? Okay, uh, we're back from our break, uh, we have, uh, completed our scheduled, uh, department and elected officials for today, and so, we're gonna be in recess until nine fifteen tomorrow morning. Y'all have a good night.
All right.